Order, closed session, special meeting. I'd like to enter into closed session, NCGS 143-31811. Panel, personal, NG, excuse me, NCGS 143-31811A3, attorney-client privilege. Can I get a motion to go in closed session?
Make a motion.
Go in closed session.
All favor.
Let's do it. Let's go.
Okay. Make a motion to go out of closed session under NCGS 143-318-
Return to open and then close.
Okay. And return to open session and close, the closed session.
Yes, sir.
Can I-
Dennis made a-
What now?
Dennis made a motion to, um, Richard-
He's already made a motion?
Yeah. And a draw.
Okay, you made, Dennis made a motion to-
We've already voted.
Oh, you've already voted? What am I gonna do, what am I supposed to do now? We're ready, we're ready.
Have to say what?
All in favor.
Okay.
All in favor.
Thank you.
All right.
All in favor. Okay. All right, if we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I tell you, we could not have asked for a more beautiful day. It's about, the word "perfect" fits, fits very well. We've got a couple of events coming. This Thursday night, we have Hits After Six. I see some of our regulars that, in here, from Hits After Six. I hope you show up, but we have a good time. Who's the band? Hayden?
Uh, you're the first, I'll get back to you.
That's okay. Let, let me see. I, I happened, the last time, too, let me see, the party, the Panda Party Band will have your dancing and singing with a setting of hits from the eighties and nineties and two thousands. So, anyway, hopefully you can make that. Let's see, we also have Spooktacular. If you want to come get some candy, we'll have, we have it at the 24th of October. I think that's a Friday. Come down and bring your bag and go through and stand in one of the longest lines you've ever stood in before to go through and get some candy. Also, we have a candidate forum on October the 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Town Hall. So, that will be in the Shirley Howell Room, again, 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, October the 26th. And I think a guy from WBT Radio is gonna emcee it. So, anyway, for all who's interested in learning more about the candidates, be a good time to come down. All right, now, we're doing something, I guess we all, I have forgotten about. We did it for the first time last time. Let's, let's start, Todd, let's start with you. Last time, we started this way. We're gonna introduce ourselves.
My name's Todd Barber.
Melanie Cox.
Mayor David Cone.
Dennis Gay.
Tom Ambergy.
Clarence Alsbruck's Jr.
And Town Manager Mike McLaurin.
Well, when I say we start this end, you're on that end, Mike. I'm sorry.
That's okay, and-
I wasn't, I wasn't, um, did I, and I said, oh, didn't I?
That's okay, and-
That's Mike McLaurin, our town manager down here on-
And Ms. Biholic, Ms. Biholic-
My bad.
Ms. Biholic is out sick tonight. She says she is feeling a little bit better, so I invited her to watch us on the big screen.
Very good. All right, that brings us to additions and deletions. Does somebody want to add, add it, or do you want me to add? Somebody want to add it? Clarence?
Make a motion to add conflict of interest as 10B.
10C.
10-
10C, right, conflict of interest. All right, and-
10C.
Can I get a motion?
That was the motion.
Oh, that was the motion. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, now, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, we have presentations tonight. We have new business, Common Ground Chiropractic. Dr. Kayla Huntington, Kayla, would you come on up? Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, where you are, and all that good stuff. And Kayla's in our, at the microphone, right there.
You guys?
Yeah, huh?
Talk to you guys.
Well, well, you can, you can look around. Or, I'll tell you what, take, if you want to turn around, take the microphone off.
And you can walk the room.
Yeah, you can turn around, look that way, if you want to.
You still want me to drop that?
We've never had anybody do that, but, you know, we're, we're welcome for-
Mayor, I think you were saying that Kayla's in the Citizens Academy.
Right, I was getting ready to say that. You are in the Citizens Academy.
Yeah.
If everybody who is not going to the Indian Trail Citizens Academy, they gotta be, you're just talking about how much fun all the different things are. Playing committees did such a fun job last week. We all got way too into the game, so.
There we go.
And I've gotten to make a lot of friends here, too, so, pretty cool for that.
You got it.
Okay, is it working? Great. Well, hi, you guys, I'm Dr. Kayla Huntington. I'm the founder of Common Ground Chiropractic. We are located just across the railroad tracks, actually, at the old, original Indian Trail Town Hall, which I think is a super fun, fun fact. Our mission at Common Ground is to help those navigating lives in between rediscover their curiosity, awaken their innate potential, also that they can create the life that they want. What I mean by "lives in between" is for those of us who are experiencing grief or loss, changes in careers, really, any time that you're changing anything in life and your nervous system just gets a little bit out of whack, you get a little too stressed, maybe a little sick, and, uh, sorry. Part of the way that we do that is we really listen to what the body is telling us. So, this is a very gentle form of chiropractic, rather than finding restrictions and pushing into them, which can be very helpful, do not get me wrong. We really find places of ease and we use those to share that goodness with the rest of the body, to put it as simple as I can. So, like I said, I'm a chiropractor, I am also a gardener, so I absolutely intend to start a community garden at the office space and really invite the community in. So, thank you.
Are you done?
I'm done.
That's it? Well, congratulations, we, we have something for you.
Do you?
Yeah, if you'll put that microphone back up there for- We've got, what we like to do is welcome you to town with our plaque, and, uh, you're already open, right? At, at, you're already-
Very soon.
Well, then, then we will, we will give you your first dollar. It's now that.
Yeah, that's great.
So, anyway, welcome to Indian Trail.
Thank you.
And we're typical to have here, so. And now, that is gonna take our picture.
Sure. And also, you can find me on indiantrailchiropractor.com, or I'll be at the Sun Valley Fall Festival this weekend as well, so, come and say hi. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, that brings us to public comments. By dressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. First speaker, Susan Somali.
Hello. It's somily, but it's close, good enough.
Well, I've always said it that way.
You have, and it's fine, everybody says that. And I'm a 21-year resident of Indian Trail. It's a little bit more somber of a topic. She did such a great job, but I was gonna write an email, I actually have it, and rather, since I'm here, I'm just gonna read it, if that's okay. And this is, first of all, I want to wish the, the two candidates that are coming up for reelection, Tom and Dennis, the best. Looks like a full slate you got going, so, coming up quick. This is regarding, regarding the occupancy tax referendum. I'm writing, or I'm speaking regarding to express my concern and seek clarification regarding the decision to place the occupancy tax referendum back on the ballot for the current reelection. As you are aware, this measure was previously presented to the residents and was voted down in 2024. Given that outcome, I and many others in this community are puzzled as to why it has resurfaced so soon. Reintroducing a measure that was recently rejected raises questions about the council's responsiveness to the will of the voters and the rationale behind revisiting this issue without significant changes to pub, or with public input. Could you please provide insight into the reasoning for this decision, and specifically, what factors led to the reconsideration of, for this referendum? Were there any substantial changes to the proposal that warrant a second vote? How does this align with the council's commitment to respecting the outcome of a democratic process? Transparency and trust are vital to maintaining a healthy relationship between the elected officials and the community. So, I appreciate your attention and look forward to your response. And I just, for your info, I happened to be in the budget meeting when our town manager, Michael McLaurin, presented the idea to the town council that it wouldn't take much money to put it back on the ballot. And it, they go up for vote, and all the voting members of the town council all raised their hands in agreement. So, with your yeses, you negated the votes of your constituents that they just had. I'm asking you, who were you representing? Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to John Early.
Good evening. I was at the festival at Crossing Rose Park Saturday, and we had some people out there preaching the gospel, and they were told if they didn't stop, they would be arrested. When I read the sign out front, I happen to have a picture of it, the sign that said, none of these, these, the following are not allowed at any time. In, in, the word "in," it says "I-N," Indian Trail Parks and Recreation Facility. But we were outside the park. We weren't inside, we had, they had tables up, they wouldn't let us go inside. So, we're outside the park, and we were told we had to stop anyway, not being inside the park. I don't get it, there's a, there's a sign called soliciting, it says soliciting without a permit. Well, there was a lady walking through soliciting us to support her in her attempt to get a, a bill through Congress. And the sheriff's deputies lately ignored that, they just lately ignored that, she was soliciting, but she was outside the park, so I don't really think she was doing anything wrong. We were outside the park. Now, I looked up on the permits, for permits that had been issued on Indian Trail Town Website. I looked for a permit for amplified, use of amplified equipment inside Crossing Rose Park, the seats, the people that had the Charlotte Pride or Union County Pride had a permit, they did not. The only two permits I seen were issued in 2016 and 2017. And nothing was done to them, they were allowed to use amplified equipment without a permit. We didn't have a permit, we were outside the park, they were inside. So, to me, that's a double standard. Y'all seem to want to make rules to make it easier on them to avoid a lawsuit, to go in there and do their sexualizing of children and make it harder on us to protest it. And I, I think, you know, I'm looking for a reason to vote for somebody that's on council, and I still haven't found one. Thank you.
David Padeghmas. David?
David Padeghmas, I live at, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I live at 805 Carmona Court. I'd like to thank Michael and staff for professional and efficient management of the town. I'd also like to thank the, the council for supporting Michael and his staff. There's a tremendous amount of information concerning how the town spends its money out on the town website, and particularly in the, in the budget book. I found a lot of good information there to use. This town, to me, is offering a family-friendly place to live through its services, programs, events, parks, and recreation facilities. What the town is doing, as I see it, is there is a proper placing of where staff increases are needed. I looked at a chart from the budget book, the administrative side of personnel, administration, planning, finance, tax, and engineering are basically flat from 2020 to now. The parks and recs went from five to seven, public works from 15 to 24.5. To me, the town is putting its money in the right places for human resources. The parks and rec and the public works are kind of the, the face of the town and what they do and the services they provide. The town is also providing a reasonable, responsible budget resulting in a low tax rate versus surrounding towns. We're at 75.80 versus Waxaw, 97.3, Stallings, 77.4, and Weddington, 63.3. We're right in the middle of the, the area. We're maintaining a healthy balance sheet to support future capital expenditures, and this healthy balance sheet is resulting in an excellent credit rating for the town. My particular situation, my valuation went up in this last reevaluation by 120,000. It was a 32% increase. My taxes went up $140, a 21% increase. It's a deceptive big increase as far as the tax at a very small cost. My taxes went up $140, and my market value went up 120. That's quite a deal, so I don't really see any big problem with the, the tax rates in town or what we're doing in the budget processes. This makes my home a great investment, supported by the town being a desirable place to live. Redfin valuations also support holdings that, that the values are holding. 2025 report shows a 5%, 5.5% increase year over year. So, in closing, I urge the council to continue to support budgets providing attractive programs and services, and if there is a mandate in the town for items desired by taxpayers, such as the community center, which I support, council should move on these items to keep the town a desirable place to live, which will preserve the value of our homes. Just like to make a quick comment on, on the timing up here. I spent a lot of time on this, but to present, some people come up and are very short. In order to present some, a good report up here and, and provide some background, we need more than three minutes. I think you guys should give us five minutes. It is very, I, I rushed, as you could-
Okay, David, we may have some questions for you at the end of what you're doing here. How's that? That's how we do, it's three for everybody, but I get it. Let, let us come back, and if we have questions, then you can come back and talk.
Perfect.
Thank, thank you.
I was done anyways.
Well, we may have some questions anyway, so, anyway, I know, I've got at least one, so. Michael Falkenberry.
Good evening. And my body tells me I'm old. How's that? I wanted to address what was said during the most recent candidate forum. Chestnut Square Park expansion, the property was purchased, cannot be buildable. Let's turn the calendar back to 2012. The town council approved purchasing 143 acres for $1.25 million, used in a loan from a bank. No public hearing, and when it was presented to the council meeting, it was revealed a third of its floodplain. And the joke was, in Indian Trail, that Indian Trail has the Everglades. But as you can see what the park has done with that property, it's amazing. The floodplain is used for walking trails and disc golf. Now, the land across the street, I'm sure it's not perfect by any means. Same thing, you have what you're dealt with, take advantage of it, use what you can, but to say that's not buildable is a flat-out lie. As last night, Todd Hunsinger even said in his presentation, you can still build on that property. Like I said, just remember that. Another issue has come up. How was it, I post a question on a candidate's Facebook page, the candidate was gracious to answer, but then we have another council member who answers on his behalf, and what he answered was not an answer to my question. That answer will be on the Indian Trail Hornets' list tonight, is that what person did, he just gave a background story about the purchase of the fire trucks, but he never answered the question, why was the general fund used to purchase those fire trucks, which it was. I want to thank the captain and the deputies for their service Saturday. I watched some of the videos, there's two sides of everything. Some of the protesters were peaceful, thank you. Some, if they were in a bar with what their, with their actions, they would find out how good their medical insurance would be. That's all I can say. Have a good evening.
Good evening. I won't cover topics that have already been covered, but I do want to talk about the Pride event on Saturday. I also attended. I went out of curiosity. Never been to one, don't know much about it, but I'd heard all kinds of horrible things of all the things that are going on, and the children that are being molested, and all of these things. Well, I didn't see any of that. The only thing I observed that gave me pause were the protesters outside the fence. As someone has said before, some of them were, were peaceful and handing out brochures and leaflets and proselytizing in what I would consider an appropriate manner. But there were a whole lot of people that were totally out of line. Simply put, it was blatant hate. Hate for anything they didn't like, hate for anything they didn't understand. Just, just absolutely screaming hate on full display, all in the name of God. It was absolutely disgusting. And that was the outside-of-the-fence people. The inside-of-the-fence people were pleasant, peaceful, just trying to enjoy their lives and enjoy the nice day in the beautiful park that the town provides, so. And there were all kinds of, of nice little activities going on, little, there was one little booth where a little old lady had knitted or crocheted a bunch of little hats, and it was like a craft show. It was very nice. So, all this hoo-ha, I don't know, they're crazy. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public comments. That brings us to council comments. Do I have any, council members want to make any comments? Mr. Gay?
Yeah, I'd like to address Susan Somali and, and what she was concerned about with the occupancy tax or whatever. I've made it very clear that I'm against it, but I, one thing I want the public to be able to do is to vote on things. And so, even when I voted for it, I haven't made the comment that I wanted, I was against it, but I wanted the public to be able to vote, and so, I'll, I won't be voting for it, and everybody knows that in here, so. But, anyway, it's important for the people to have a say. And I also like to address John, it's a very emotional thing, and yes, there is a concern about lawsuits, and we have to be careful with, with both sides, and I'm not sure, you know, the council really doesn't make the rules as far as what you can do outside the park, but it's important that you let us know that, and so, we can ask the question. But, you know, we're, we're not out there personally, but if you call us and let us know how you feel about it, we, I mean, we will look into it and get back to you with an answer.
Todd?
I too want to address Susan Somali. You know, I think we, you know, the residents don't understand that tax, you know, everybody just, well, hold on, everybody thinks that it's an additional tax for the citizens when, in fact, it's a person that visits Indian Trail that has a, an event like Carolina Courts or whatever, and they need a place to stay at that hotel. We don't even have a hotel yet. However, those taxes apply to those visitors, okay? And the money that derives from those taxes goes to Indian Trail Tourism, okay? So, it's not an additional tax on the citizens. It's a, like, anyway, like, if you go to the beach, you stay at a hotel, you pay their city, county, whatever tax they put on there, that's exactly what it is. It's not an additional tax on the citizen. So, I'm, I was for letting it go back because of that. I believe that it needs to be blasted to where the citizens understand you're not being taxed additionally, okay? So, that's my answer on that. And then, on John Early, I'm really upset, I didn't know this, that they were preaching the gospel. I, I was out there, I think, two years ago, whenever the last time they had an event, because there were seven sheriff's deputies fly up on it, I was two streets over from here, and I saw the car, so I came up to investigate. So, I was inside the gate, and I was hearing some god-awful stuff and people that claimed to be for Jesus. You know, they were, they were out of line, those guys were. However, there were some peaceful people that were talking about Jesus and saving Jesus, you know, Jesus saves or whatever. And now, I, I want to look into that, and I'll get with the sheriff's department and find out what that exactly entailed. And I'll get back with you, John.
Clarence?
So, as far as the tax is concerned, what I think happened was, we felt like we didn't do, we didn't advertise it enough so that people would understand what it really is, so. And also, Stallings, as I understand, they're putting it back up as well, because we look at it as something that will benefit the town. So, that's why. It wasn't necessarily that we wanted to go against the citizens, but we thought there was something that we could use for the citizens and that we could do a better job explaining it. So, that's the reason for that. And again, like I said, at least Stallings is doing it as well. John, what I, or the citizen that said something about the protest and everything, I think it would be best, this is, we don't have enough time to go back and forth, to please make an appointment with the town manager, maybe Park and Recs, and come in and sit down and just have a long discussion about, and you can go, you know, line by line of what you feel and what you think, and you can hear it from them, and that way, y'all can just have a discussion. It's probably not the place and time to have it right now, because we just don't have enough time for it. For David or Mr. Padeghmas, I know that you were on the planning board, and I know that you, that you have some kind of background with finances, so I was just wondering, what, what was your background with financing as far as-
I'm a retired CPA, and early in my career, I worked for a firm on North of the audited municipalities, and also my hometown of Southfield, Connecticut, I served on the boards of finance and education.
Thank you. And one thing you said that I, I thought was pretty interesting, that if your home goes up $200,000 and you only pay $200 for it, that's a good investment, you know, because I am in the world of buying houses and flipping and trying to make a little extra money and, you know, extra, extra income, those things you could always take, buy another house and, you know, do plenty of things with it, so. Thank you for your input, I appreciate it, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Todd?
Thank you. Yeah, we did put the hotel tax on the ballot last year, and we've gone multiple years here, going to the legislature to get them approved of us to be able to do this. Matter of fact, Craig Horn tried, Dean Arx tried a couple times, and we sent it up there, and former council member McIntyre can attest to that. So, they did advertise last year, and we didn't feel like it was a good job, but staff had recommended we do it again this year. One of the reasons was, since it advertised, we weren't gonna spend any money again on advertising, and I just don't think it's a bad thing to put something out to the voters and let them decide. So, yeah, I voted for it, and the, the money is, most towns have hotel tax, so if it passes here, then, then we can use it for basically, I think, I think you have to set up what's called a tourism committee to decide where the money goes. So, that's kind of where that's at. I do have a question, since Mr. Early brought it up, and since we got Parks and Rec and the town manager here, I don't know if you know the answer, but- the town manager here, I don't know if you know the answer, but when someone reserves the park and we have a contract with a permit and if they advertise to open it up to the public, what is our, do they have the ability to keep people out of that park? Can they pick and choose? So, I think that's the question, right? Can you go in? Can you go out? Is that part of the contract? I don't know. So, maybe, you know, this is the only event I know of where we have these protesters and it's a controversial event. So, what is, I mean, obviously, we had to tell the sheriff's office or we got a rule, who can go in or who don't if you advertise that it's open to the public.
Okay, let me start.
I think you had a good question on that.
All right, let me start with the answer. And so, Mr. Kramer's back there listening intently and if I start to make a mistake, he's going to come up here and bail me out. When someone rents where they're renting the room downstairs or renting Crossing Pass Park, that is basically a private rental. We could have the Todd Barber birthday party at Crossing Pass Park. And in some cases, depending on the event, we may put some additional requirements such as additional deputies and stuff like that. And the applicant has to contract with the sheriff's office at whatever the market bears to get those deputies on there. They also have to provide insurance and things of that nature, not for the Todd Barber birthday party. And because they have reserved that piece of land, they can determine who can come in and who cannot during that period of time. Also, you might remember about a year ago or less, council adopted a rule about amplified sound at the park or outside the park. And so, what that means is if, in this case, the gay pride or the birthday party, there's protesters out there with megaphones, they're not supposed to be doing that. So, from my perspective, there were some people that were peaceful, there were some people that were intent on using amplified sound that we had to talk to. There were no arrests or incident report that day. Hayden, did I miss anything on that or does that pretty much capture it?
Yeah, I think that captures it.
Yep.
That answered your question.
No, he said outside the park. The sun specifically was in the park. We were not in the park, we were outside of the park.
Yeah, those are the park rules and also the other thing is that, and we can follow up with the council if they so desire, is the importance of keeping the sidewalk clear where people, whether protesting or not, you know, can make their way along the sidewalk. But I think I was out there most of the day. Jake was there, Hayden was there a lot of the days, the mayor was there and council member also Brooks, I think I saw him there most of the day.
All right. First, I want to, Susan, tell you what I, how I feel about the occupancy tax. You know, it was up last time, two years ago, and which brings me back, the first time I ran, two years before I ran, they had a park referendum to vote on the parks. I wanted to have parks, so I asked that the parks be put back on there, not one, but two parks, one for each side of the highway. And it passed. So, it didn't pass when I wasn't on there, but when I got there, because I felt like I got out and worked very hard to get the parks passed because I believed in the parks. And I actually think the parks that we have today make Indian Trail a much better place to live, much better place to live. I'm a strong park advocate and we have a tremendous parks department and I think our town revolves around our parks. So, yes, you can vote against it one time. You know, you could go back to how many politicians ran one year and lost, but they ran again the next time and they won. So, it's all on those things. But I want to explain a little bit about the occupancy tax. Monroe has an occupancy tax. Matthews has an occupancy tax. Monroe brought in about $800,000 of money on occupancy tax for people staying in their hotels. That was money that was brought in by the people that they don't live in in Monroe, 99.9% of them. Because who stays in a hotel if you live in the town? Very rare. So, it actually helps the citizens here. It helps us pay less taxes. We're going to have to pay, it has to go towards tourism, so it naturally could go towards the parks. Believe me, we spend $800,000, it's been a lot more than that on what we do in parks here. So, it would be nice if the other, just as they're doing, if you go to the beach, if you go to Charlotte, if you go to Matthews, you go to Monroe, you're going to pay an occupancy tax everywhere you go. So, for us not to do it, it's not going to make somebody want to come here and stay in a hotel for five, the five bucks that they're not going to, they're going to save because they're probably going to pay more than five bucks in gas to have to go if they're going to need to come here. So, with all that, I hope that makes a little more sense to you. It actually behooves the residents. It actually makes it, it saves us money. It saves us money at the same fact that other towns are making it. When we go there, we're giving them our money. So, we're just trying to get it back that way. So, I wanted to explain that. I was curious about John's question about amplified sound. I know that, you know, that we did pass an ordinance on that, on amplified sound. Now, I've attended the last two gay pride events because they were here in Indian Trail and I felt like it was my job to, had it been in Monroe, had it been in Charlotte, had it been somewhere, I wouldn't have been there. And, you know, and I get screamed at and everything else for being there, but it's my job as the mayor. That's what I signed up for and that's my job. And most of all, I'm there learning too. And when I, and the thing I hear the most is the sexualization or whatever of kids. I've been there for two years, I've never seen any of that, not any of that whatsoever. But that's what I'm there for. And if there were somebody doing it, I'd stop it. I would stop it. I'd stop the whole doggone thing right now. I'd stop it. Now, I want to explain one more thing and I, my lady that I tried to explain, and I'm never hidden from anybody. I call you when you call me and I'm not going to hide from this. First of all, the council doesn't make the decision on who uses our parks. If we did, every Johnny's birthday party would have to come to council, everything. So, it doesn't. Everything goes through the parks and not here. We have one of the best attorneys anywhere, anywhere. And she'll flat-out tell you that if we tell a group of people, if we tell gay people that you can't use our parks because you're gay, you're going to get sued and you're going to lose. And I made this, explaining this, that, you know, maybe we should ask the residents if you want to add a couple more pennies on your tax next year, maybe we do it that way. But I don't think the residents want to do that and that's, we could disagree on that. Maybe they, maybe they do. Maybe they want to pay a couple hundred extra dollars more for their house in case we do get sued. And it's not the way I feel, but if you don't want to see it, don't go. Just don't go to the parks because there is, I have not seen it. You do have, and you know, we moved that event next to the sheriff's office this year. And to go to the bathroom, you had to go to the bathroom at the sheriff's office. So, it was very well overseen by our police department. Now, the amplified sound, John, you know, you tell a story and I get it, but you are outside, but you've got this amplified sound that you're screaming into the facility there and it's loud, it's real loud, it's over. And that's exactly why they put the no amplified sound is. So, if that were a kid's birthday party and people were standing out there shouting at these kids, telling them whatever, however they felt, you know, it wouldn't be allowed. It wouldn't be allowed. So, I don't think it's because people that are in the parks that are gay, it's because it's just not allowed. It's not allowed to scream at people with amplified sound so loud that they can't hear themselves inside the park. Not defending it, not defending it, but I'm just saying that's the rule. And that's, it's not somebody preaching out there. Anybody could go out there and stand and preach. You could have a street preacher just so he didn't have amplified sound. Anybody can speak and anybody can listen. You just can't stand and scream at people inside there. I'm not saying good, bad, whatever. But I will say this as mayor here, and I'm going to step out on a limb a little bit. I don't agree that they have a drag show there. I don't agree. And I tried three times to stop it, three different times to stop it. But you're either going to get, here's two ways to stop it. You get sued and go ahead and take the loss or you stop every person in town from being able to rent anything in our parks. And isn't that defeating the purpose of our parks? You can't have kids' baseball games, you can't have birthday parties, you can't, and believe me, nobody spends more times in the park than I do. When you leave here tonight, go through the park and see how many people are out there having fun. So, why take that away from everybody? Just don't go. Just don't go to that. And I hope next year, we can stop somehow having the drag show. That's just my opinion and I will do what I can to do that. Other than that, you cannot stop people because they're gay, because they're black, because they're Jewish, because they're any other reason from going to the park. And I do feel like that mainly, they were there, I watched, they were having, what they wanted to do was say, I want to, I've got a few friends here and I want to hang out with them, but I didn't see anything out of the ordinary other than that. So, with that being said, I think I said enough. Talking about the wasteland part, the land bought across the street, we went through this, so I'll just touch on this again. For anybody that thinks that's wasteland, it's not wasteland. It appraised for one point, what do we finally end up saying? $1.3 million? $1.3 million? It appraised for $1.3 million more than we paid for it. So, that says one thing. And you can check it out, we had a developer offer us $500,000 more for it after we bought it, right after we bought it. So, we got a good deal on it and we're going to do some good things with that land, just as we did when I was here, when we bought the parks for Crooked Creek Park. You would never touch that for how much money we paid for that, to have what we have there. So, with all that being said, we live in a great town. We do, we add a lot of good things and we try to make it better. And let's try to make it better every year with what we're doing. And I feel very strongly about a lot of things, but I'm going to applaud the council tonight and I appreciate all of you for speaking up tonight and basically giving your opinion on things. It's not easy sitting up here. I'm going to tell you, it's not. It's not easy to make everybody happy. It's not. It's not. And sometimes, sometimes we have to do things or vote on things that we not necessarily, we don't necessarily believe in, but legally, we have to or we should because we take an oath to do exactly that. That being said, I'm going to shut up, we're going to move on. Thank you all for coming up and speaking. David, the same question that I had for you, Clarence asked you that. So, I appreciate you coming tonight. All right, so that does public comments. Let's go to law enforcement. Andy?
Doc, if you can do it, I can do it. Before she walks out, I'm just going to tell you, I got my feelings hurt there just a little bit because I fiddle with this son of a gun every time I stand up here and ain't nobody ever told me I could take it off and/or dance with it. So, anyway, I was, before I get into what I was going to do, I was going to stand up here and talk about Saturday and give my two cents worth because I was there all day. And Mayor, you said something a while ago, you said it's hard sitting up here, making everybody happy. You ain't never going to do that, no matter how hard you work. Now, you're not going to make everybody happy. But I will tell you from my point of view, and the best thing that I like about this town and the best thing I like about this board is that the mayor and I, and actually mentally, me and you've had some pretty good heated discussions too, we don't always agree. But the main thing I like about this town is we can stand up here and we, or we can go back here in a room and we can have a civil conversation and we may leave that room and we may not agree, but at least they know where I'm coming from and I know where they're coming from and I can respect their opinion and they can respect mine. So, if you don't agree with where I'm coming from, you don't have to. I'm going to love you even though you don't. I grew up in church all my life and I apologize if I get a little bit emotional. But I left Saturday as sick on my stomach as I have ever been. I've been in law enforcement 27 years and some of the crap that I have seen didn't make me physically as sick on my stomach as I was when I left Saturday. I believe in Jesus and I know where I'm going when I die. And if you don't like that, I'm sorry. But I was told by some of the folks that were preaching out there on Saturday that I was going to hell, how wrong I was, how terrible I was, how fascist I was. It just, it just didn't settle well. And I'm just going to be honest with you, I've lost a little bit of weight, but I'm big enough to take it. And part of, part of what I was trying to do was talk to folks. And folks were so mad on Saturday, I couldn't get two words in edgewise. So, what I finally said to one of the folks who was preaching on Saturday, I said, sir, it's apparent that you and I are not going to agree and it's apparent that you are not going to let me finish one sentence that I'm trying to tell you. And I said it in that tone, didn't raise my voice and I wasn't screaming, wasn't going to because it wasn't going to do anything, wasn't going to benefit anybody. And then he started fussing at me again and telling me how sorry I was. You folks can have the Pride event in this town, oh, you won't, I won't be there. Anyway, we're going to move on. It's been, it's been a busy week in Indian Trail this week. We, talking about stats for month of September, we had 4,714 total calls for the month of September, 2,436 of those were proactive preventative, preventative patrols, I can't even read my notes. I went through, I give the mayor and council, you know, I give you guys a list of all those and kind of went through and just kind of pick out some of the larger numbers. I don't give you the exact same totals every week, but just kind of highlight it. We had 102 alarm calls. We had 218 911 hangups, 46, I thought this was kind of high, 46 animal calls in the month of September, 206 business checks, 116 follow-up investigations, 217 paper services, whether it was civil papers, evictions, warrants, domestic violence orders, civil summonses, we served 217 of those within the town. We had 52 calls where we went out and just checked on folks. I included that, 52 well-being checks. It's not a real big number, but they was, these 52 people apparently care enough about other folks in this town want us to check on them. And we did. And we did. We did 12 ALE checks. Seven of those folks, or seven of those places that we went in, there was absolutely zero violations. Five of them, we gave verbal warnings. And my understanding, they are, they are working on fixing all of those issues. As far as, that's it for the stats for September. As far as, I'm sure I, I'm, I have already gotten several questions, so I'm just, as far as last night at Taco Bell, wanted to address that as well. So the, the event at Taco Bell was, it was a targeted event on a victim there in Indian, in the Taco Bell. It was not targeted at any of those other employees. It was not an armed robbery. Nor did it have anything else to do, like I say, with any of those other folks. It was simply a act between that victim and that offender. Our detectives are currently working on the case. We have some leads and we are, are working on developing those. I would leave it with, you know, if you have anything pertaining to that, please stop by our office, call the sheriff's office, whatever you wanna do, be glad to sit down and talk with you about it. But Mayor, I know you have gotten questions before about why do we pay, why does the town pay sheriff's office? I wanna touch on that too. And it's gonna, it's just, our, well. We, I got there last night after I got the call of, of what had occurred and I showed up and I took just a minute to take account. Outside of what you pay officer-wise, there were 12 other Union County Deputy Sheriffs that you don't pay for, that were there last night. That were working that, that event. I'd say probably about eight of those, I was with them till about four o'clock this morning, still working that event. Along with that was North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. They were there helping us as well. And like I say, those folks put in some long hours, they did some good work and we're gonna get that figured out one way or another. But you get a whole lot more than you pay for. And I appreciate you letting me work up here.
Andy, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That, that ends the law enforcement update. And my last thing I wanna say is that you just don't know how lucky you, we are to have a sheriff's department the way we do, that cares about us as people. We have a staff here that, they don't come to work, they love this town. And we're lucky, we're darn lucky. And I love being your mayor. It's more than a job. And Andy, I saw you out there sun Saturday and I could see the stress, I could see how you felt, it was the same way I felt when I, I left. And it's always not the easiest thing to do, you just try to do the right thing. And that's all we can do. And I thank you all for it. So, okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I?
I'll make a motion.
Can I say something before we move on?
Go ahead.
I'll hijack it just for a second. Just say, Captain, I support you. Real quick, I'll make it quick as I can. Most people don't know, but we actually attend the same church. So we see each other in church and I, I think I'm gonna say this, cause I think it's gonna be good for me. It was hard being out there Saturday and, and people saying stuff to you and I, I tried to explain it as a sporting event. You have a referee. The referee doesn't make the rules, but the referee's there and who will force the rules. And if you show favoritism one way or the other, then you're not a good referee. So it doesn't matter if you like one team or the other, you're supposed to do your job and, and that's what we were out there to do. And I say this because somebody said that they voted for me and that I attend a certain church and everything and that if someone feels that I pulled the wool over their hi, their eyes when I ran for my campaign because I said churches are important to the community. I really do feel that. Just a quick story, I used to take food when my office was in Charlotte to, leftover food to the drug, drug users and prostitutes. And it was just like Jesus when he was in Samaria and he talked to the lady at the whale. Jewish people didn't like Samaritans, so Jesus met her where she was at. And there was one particular woman, I used to take food to her and it got to where she trusts me and I shared the gospel with her, how she could become saved. And she told me, "Thank you." And the next day I found out that that woman passed away. So I think some people, it's not a true story, but some people might be sad in heaven because I can see some people up there and all of a sudden they see me and they look at Jesus and they say, "What is he doing here? He didn't have enough hate in his heart to tell them about you." And I would hope Jesus would say, "He had enough love in his heart to show them who I am." So for those who are disappointed and you think a certain way because you saw me at a pride event working, I was just doing my job, I was official. And, and I would hope people don't, if you don't know me, please don't question my Christianity. Cause I do the best I can, that's personal with me. And then also I said, if anybody ever wants to talk to me, please don't hold a camera in my face. We can't have a respectful conversation. If I ask you not to put a camera in my face and you can't do that, if you can't respect me from the beginning, how can we have a conversation? And I have a 10-digit phone number. It's easier to call me than it is to type all this stuff on Facebook about me. And that's all I have to say about that, so thank you.
Thank you, Clarence. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, in favor? unanimous. All right, no public hearing tonight, old business, Union County Sheriff's contract, Mr. McLaurin.
Okay, I cannot command the room like that young lady did that was here earlier. So I'm not even gonna try, I'm gonna look at you. I think some of you, I've, I told you that I was on the ground floor back in the early 90s when town started to contract with the sheriff's office. Never would I envision that in the early 90s, maybe mid 90s, who knows, that one day I'd be the manager of this fine town and we would be talking about the contract. So if, if you go back to May, I think what the council agreed to do was allow me to sign a new contract with the sheriff's office. And so we started down that path. And so we had made some changes to the process, working in collaboration with the county. I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I'm gonna hit some of the highlights and just ask that you, you approve the contract, approve me, basically again, confirming that I can sign the contract. If you look at what we pay the sheriff's office compared to the other towns, we pay far more money, we have more deputies and we have more events where we use those services and say, a Marvin or a Weddington or something like that. In the county, if you're familiar with the county, they have pretty much a one standard contract. This is a contract that we use for everyone. And so, and having some discussions with the sheriff's office, we felt like that we probably needed some additional stuff, some additional clarifications that weren't in the, the typical model contract. And as I go along, Melanie, if I miss something, feel free to, to speak up. So what we did was, we, we basically have a statement of understanding, which is a non-binding document, which the sheriff has signed off on. And we also looked at the, what I'll call the model contract or the master contract. We had several meetings with, with members of the sheriff's office and so they ran it through their legal and they kinda came up with a new model, if you will. So what I'm gonna do is again, hit the high points of the statement of understanding and then we'll go into the main contract and I'll explain primarily the differences. Under the statement of con, statement of understanding, one of the primary points of the con, contract between the county and the town is through the town manager's office. That doesn't mean they don't talk to Hayden, it doesn't mean they don't talk to Abby, but as the official contact, that's how we work it. We also have some language in there about clarification about the sheriff's office role in helping us enforce some of the town ordinances and town codes, things of that nature. We also have some language in there about providing adequate law enforcement personnel to support traffic control and public safety at, at town-sponsored events. Now, in some cases, what we have to do on some of the town-sponsored events, I'll remind you, is that we have to not only use their own-duty stuff, which may mean some people get shifted around on the, on the squad, but they also off-duty deputies, keep in mind Family Fun Day, if you will. And so Hayden does a mighty fine job with that. The other thing that we do is in the spring of the year, and it will be the spring of the year before you know it, is that we'll work collaboratively to see how many deputies they feel like they need and how many the, the town council is willing to support or how many we can afford to support. It just, again, just kinda cleaning up some of that language and that the sheriff's office will provide a staffing level summary periodically. And basically the statement of understanding stays in place until one or both of us choose to change it. Now, let's go over to the quote, "model contract," if you will. Before, the way it worked was you had a four-year contract and within that four years, as you added people, you basically amended the contract each year. And I think you actually approved that. And so the last time it was a five-year contract. So what we've done is, we've worked together for 20-plus years, don't see that changing anytime soon, but we basically say this contract stays in place until either party gives a six-month notice. The old contract was a 12-month notice. So we identify the number of people that we fund each year. We don't tell the sheriff how to staff the Indian Trail Division. He, through the captain or whomever, will decide how many people they have on a squad where they'll work and things like that. It's also, this is the same language as before. We cover 90% of the cost and the county covers the 10% of the cost. It, it's also clear that they are and report to the sheriff's office. In other words, I can't go out there and tell the deputy how to direct traffic. It's not appropriate, just like the deputies won't tell Hayden how to run the park and recreation department. We're all in agreement on that. We do have one paragraph in here I like a lot, but basically owner before March 1st of each year, we will meet and it also says we, I'm supposed to have regular meetings with the sheriff's office and confirm good faith to discuss the number of deputies to be requested. And by the end of March, the county will provide in writing with the projected contract price for the upcoming year. Because we're, we're working on our budget, they're working on their budget, okay? The final contract will be provided to the town two business days after the approval of the county budget. Now, let me tell you why that's important. We approve our budget in the early part of June and the county didn't approve their budget this year until late June, so you have that gap. And so if for some reason the estimated price comes in real high, then we, we go back and we decide how to address that. If a deputy sheriff position assigned to the town under this agreement is left vacant for more than 60 consecutive days and the sheriff does not temporarily assign another deputy sheriff to fill the position, beginning on day 61, county shall prorate the costs and it'll be credited at the next quarter. They will also send, they will not send an invoice, but we make quarterly payments to the county. There's also some language in there about grant funding that we work out how the match will be handled. It also provides that we will provide them an office in which they can do their work. Y'all are familiar, it's a building right across the way that we also share with the Public Works. We lease it to them for the grand total of $1 per year. So Mayor, we might need another dollar here. But we also cover the utilities, the trash pickup, things like that. If there's any repairs over $1,000, they're supposed to get the town's permission. So those are kinda the high points of that. I will tell you that we have worked very well with the sheriff's office on improving some of that building, some of the improvements they did with some of the ARPA-enabled revenue. We were able to put the generator in there. It's a very nice building, very clean building and Melanie, have I missed anything?
I think you covered the highlights.
Ma'am?
I think you covered all the highlights.
All right, so that's all I've got. So unless there's any questions from the board, Mr. Mayor, we just need a motion, second vote, authorize manager to engage the lease and the contract.
What's the term length of the contract?
It, it automatically renews unless either party gives six months.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the town managers to execute the Union County Sheriff's contract renewal as presented.
Oh, in favor? unanimous. Bless you. Very good. Okay, Park Road East update, Councilmember Barber.
Back in 2022, we did a Park Road East traffic analysis and the traffic analysis came back and the thing was this, the roadway does meet our warrants based on our policy. And the town engineer said the engineering department is holding a performance bond on this roadway due to the town center development and will eventually get the developer to remediate Park Road. This won't occur until the internal access road for the town center is constructed and fully utilized. Once this internal road comes online, then we will perform another traffic analysis to see if there are any changes in the data due to the dual usage. Since we got two roads now going on Park Road and that internal road is functional, I just wonder if we could get an update, if we're gonna do another track analysis or what, what we gonna do?
Mr. Hunsinger is prepared to talk about that.
Mr. Barber, yeah, I went back and you, somebody sent me the memo, about three years old. So I had to, I had to go find that one. But yes, you're correct, what you read, what I stated in the memo. I will tell you, probably six months to a year ago, we released that bond because we are not allowed to legally post a bond that, for an existing roadway. And so we got pushed back years ago from Bonterra. Bonterra, we were trying to do that with their Phase 4 and we're told, told that is not legal. And so as you may recall, what they, what water mains, they did put into Park Road and, you know, along the roadway itself, they fixed that, we made them fix it. I think that was before the parade one year. So that bond is not, is not, no longer, it's, it's been released. And we, going forward, we cannot do that practice anymore, just FYI, all developers have a right to use public roads regardless of their haul, haul road or whatever. If they damaged the road, yes, we would work with them to get them fixed, but we could, we cannot make them go back and resurface that whole entire park road. So they fixed what they, they disturbed and we released it. Now, as far as the traffic analysis, I went back and looked at that, six correct, it, it does qualify at the time for neighborhood traffic coming and what, and we wanted to check it after the developer started using, well, developed, the apartment started using that access. To be honest with you, I haven't never, I've never heard from any of these property owners on Park Road, so it really didn't jog my memory. on Park Road, so it really didn't jog my memory to go back, so we do have that scheduled to check that road again. If that data supports it, I will get with the, I think it's the Rogers family, that made the first request through an email, I think Mr. Barber sent, way back three years ago. If you can provide me with the contact information for Mr. Rogers, I'll be happy to call him. I will tell you, the way the policy works is, if it does qualify, then the person that makes the request does have to do the due diligence of going to every property owner, and I think there's 10 to 12 property owners along that roadway, he has to get 60% of those property owners to sign off, or we do not implement the traffic comming. Now, obviously, you're a council, it's just a policy, you can overrule that if you feel like, you know, they shouldn't have to do that, but it's technically the policy, and he would be required to do that before we start implementing it. But we won't go through that part, and we won't start talking to Mr. Rogers until we know that the data supports it again, so we'll figure that out and let y'all know. Mr. Barber?
So to be clear, we're going to do the traffic analysis again?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll go from there.
Yep, yep. We wanted to make sure, I think it was around, just so y'all know, I think it was, you got to be between 500 and 2,500 cars a day, and everywhere around 1,000 cars a day at the time, when the apartment people were using it primarily. So let's see if that changed, if it dips below 500, and technically it does not support traffic comming as well. And I will tell you, I've never had anybody call out of those 12 property owners on Park Road about a speeding problem, except for Mr. Rogers and him three years ago. So if somebody would have called, it probably would have jogged my memory, and we would have been already done the second analysis, but unfortunately, that didn't happen.
It was his daughter.
His what?
It was his daughter.
Daughter, okay, Mrs. Rogers, sorry.
He's passed away.
Oh, is he? Okay. Well, you say Rogers family, so I'm assuming there's your Mrs.
His wife's still there.
Okay, sorry, all right. Very good. Yeah, I'll call, I'll call Ms. Rogers.
Just a quick question. That is a road that takes you down to the baseball fields, correct?
That's correct.
And it's kind of made me smile just a little bit, to think about it. I'm sure during baseball season, you're going to get 1,000 more cars there a day, but maybe, depends on when you do that, that traffic study.
Well, that's true.
If you did it when it wasn't baseball season, it might be very little traffic.
Right.
So I guess it just depends on when you do the traffic study.
And I would want to bring this up too, and I'm glad I thought of it, because I about messed up not mentioning it, but if we do put speed humps out, to say they qualify, folks, property owners, okay with it, and we want to put some out there, and I don't know how many is going, we need, it's based on the distance and all that, it may be two, it may be three. I'm not going to put speed humps out there until we resurface the road, you know, because we all, we want to do it all in one sweep, you don't want to put speed humps on an old road like that. So we would have to coordinate that through the resurfacing contract, and that certainly could happen this year. We probably won't advertise research contract till the first of the year, so we can add that to the contract if we need to, but just FYI, we would have to expend money to resurface that whole entire road while, and then put speed humps in. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, that brings us to Mr. Also Brooks, CRTPO update.
All right, so just a quick review, like I said, I wanted to come to everyone and give you updates on what's going on with some projects that's going around Indian Trail. They all go through CRTPO, but I'm trying to concentrate on what generally is with Indian Trail. So the old Monroe Road widened, the construction to begin in the summer or fall of 2026, going to Indian Trail Road, currently they're doing utility relocation work. Construction begins to begin 2028 from Indian Trail Road to Wesley Chapel Road, and then on Highway 74, the construction, as I said before, the lead time is 2025, contract time is three to, three to, three and a half months. And what they'll be doing is installing a left turn from Highway 74 bound to Hayes Road, and a right turn only from Hayes Road on the Highway 74. All right, Bobby. All right, so for U 4714B, Duke Energy has six work orders for the section of the project, although we have split the project up into BA and BB sections, Duke continues to relocate utilities throughout. The first three work orders are estimated to be completed in early November. Once completed, Spectrum and Piedmont Natural Gas can begin work in these areas. The remaining three work orders are in the area that have some right-of-way steel to acquire. Once the remaining parcels are closed, Duke can begin work. The section on the project, this section of the project has been broken up into two subsections, BA and BB. And BA section will end just east of Indian Trail Road, and BB section will begin. The BA section is scheduled to begin construction in conjunction with the AC section late next summer. The BB section will continue, begin work in spring 2028. And then also, also, on our consent agenda for tomorrow, there's a CRTPO meeting tomorrow, it's live streamed, you can check it out at, or you can go in person, it starts at 6:00, it's at the Charlotte Meck Government Center, address is 600 East 4th Street, it's room 267 on the second floor, but if not, you can live stream it. And we will be going on our consent agenda, there's something for the grade separation plan amendment for Rocky River Road and Highway 74, and this is an example for what a grade separation is, basically an overpass. So what you have is Rocky River Road and Highway 74, where they intersect, both of them are about a mile, well, they're equal distance from downtown Indian Trail and downtown Monroe. So this is a good section for some kind of development or economic development. Now, I will say that we are voting to go forward with the plan, but there's no money allocated for this. But this picture is up here to give you an example of what a grade separation is. You may recognize this as Stallings Road and Highway 74. Some people will refer to it as overpass bridge or something like that. So if you hear me in the future say grade separation, then that's what I'm talking about. So, all right. That's all from me.
There you go.
Any questions, or we're going to keep it moving?
Thank you, Clarence, I appreciate your hard work. Clarence goes down the CRTPO. Let me ask you something, you invited everybody down there, and of course, I used to go, you kind of took over from when I went down there, and you used to go, and you used to eat free. Does that mean everybody that goes down there can eat free if they go down there?
If you give me your credit card, we'll make it happen, so.
I hear you. I hear you. Well, thank you for your hard work.
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us up to Ms. Massey, banking RFP recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the Finance Department, in early August, sent out RFPs for our core banking services. The last time that we did this was in 2021, so it was time per our policy to send those out. The responses were due back September 12th. We did receive six qualified responses from all of the banks in our area. Truist, which is our current provider, South State Bank, American Bank, First Citizens, First National, and Fifth Third. Our initial evaluation, we look at cost, so that we could narrow the pool down, we narrowed that down to three banks, South State, American Bank, and First National Bank. After that narrowing down, just merely based on cost, we invited all three banks in, we did interviews with those, there was a committee, myself, Alicia Gaddy, Adam, and Mike were on that committee. We looked at several things during that process, the criteria that we consider when we're looking for our next partner in banking. Obviously, cost is a big thing for us, and basically, the way that that works is we, banks offer earning credits based on the balance that we keep in the account, so typically, we don't pay banking service fees because we maintain that minimum balance. The level of service, financial strength of the bank, system, capabilities and technology, logistics, bank responsiveness, their relationship and partnership with the town, and then the implementation schedule. As you can imagine, changing banks is a large undertaking, and you heard, I didn't list our current provider as one of the three that we brought forward based on cost initially. So we will be switching banks, and it will be my recommendation tonight that we award our contract to South State Bank. Some of our deciding factors with South State over the other two banks that we brought in for interviews, they have the lower balance required for us to earn our credits, meaning that the funds that were left are there to accrue interest. And they gave us multiple account type options, so we don't have to sweep money into a sweep account if we don't want to, to earn interest, we can actually just leave it in our checking. Their customer service hours are outside of normal operating hours. There are many times whenever we are in this building after 5:00 PM making deposits, if we have issues, we need to be able to speak to somebody after 5:00 PM. And the cost of equipment that we get from the bank was also in our recommendation for that. So I welcome any questions, but my recommendation would be that we award South State Bank with our next banking contract.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend the motion to approve the award of the core banking services contract with South State Bank as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. I'll have that agreement on the consent agenda for the next meeting, sir. Thank you.
Mr. McLamb? Thank you. Ms. Massey? Resolution authorizing sale of donation of surplus items.
I don't dance, so if Clarence wants to come back up here again, he can, but I'm not going to dance, so. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just really quick, I wanted to bring this up to y'all, just so you know, we are, we donate, we do surplus quite often, y'all see different vehicles that we are running through our system. This time, the items are a couple of different things that we haven't surplused in the past. One is a drone that we bought back when a previous manager was here that we don't use anymore, technically, we shouldn't be using it, nobody on town staff has a pilot's license, and you need that to be able to use that item. We also work through Abby and through Parks and Rec with Jay, I know him as Jay, is, I don't even, Halfback Drones, that does all the drone work that you see that's done the Parkway, I mean, he does amazing work, way more than we ever thought we could. So that's one item. Another item we're going to work, and the main reason why we wanted to talk about this, is the town used to have a stage, we still have that stage, but we don't use it very often anymore. Hayden has worked with one of the nonprofits, Lanty, and they would like the ability to, for us to donate that stage to them, but we will work to have an agreement, kind of like y'all did in the past with the athletic associations, if you go back to remember the beginning of ARPA, when we donated some money to them, but there were some agreements that was worked out, we're looking to do that same kind of thing this time, but that would be with Lanty for some services that they could provide back to Parks and Rec for that ability to use. And the last one is just a piece of equipment that we have that we are no longer using. So just looking for approval to be able to do those per general statute.
Can I get a motion?
Recommend the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the sale or donation of surplus town property worth less than $30,000 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, that brings us down to what we call conflict of interest to waive, and this comes. Melanie, do you, would you like to explain it a little better than I just did?
Sure. There's been several discussions with Autobell regarding they want to expand their business, and I've had some conversations with their attorney regarding his representation of Autobell, and it turns out, he in fact represented the town of Indian Trail when the original text amendment was passed that allowed them to, if they purchased the parcel next to them, expand. And so based on that realization and some other things that came up, the attorney reached out to the state bar, the state bar said he did in fact have a conflict of interest. And so the only way he can continue to represent his client in this matter is if the town of Indian Trail, the board, waives that conflict.
Is there any questions on this?
Just, my comment is just that if the bar is saying is not for it, then, you know, I'm leaning towards the bar as far as my recommendation as well.
Would we like just to vote on it?
Just to be clear, the bar doesn't make a recommendation whether or not you waive it, that's your decision, the bar just said that there's a conflict.
The bar says there's a conflict.
Correct.
So on the conflict of interest, do we, I'm trying to word this correctly, do we want to waive this, and by doing so, I'm trying not to, if we waive it?
If you waive it, then he can continue to represent the client. If you make a motion not to waive it.
I'll just make it easy, all in favor of waiving it, raise your hand.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Somebody make a motion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion not to waive the conflict of interest.
Not to waive it, okay, all in favor? Unanimous. That's great. I mean, it's not great that that happened, it's just great we all agreed on it, which I'm glad we did, I wasn't necessarily expecting that, so I'm glad that happened. Okay, David, that brings us to managers' update, Mike.
Yes, sir. I too was out there on Saturday. I too got yelled at, along with Hayden and Jake and the mayor and Clarence. And I do want to give my appreciation to Hayden, I got a grandson by the name of Haven, so you can imagine, and Jake, because what they were trying to do was simply protect the rights of all, the rights of the protesters and the rights of the people who chose to go to that event. And both of my Park and Rec staff were calm, professional, they didn't get sucked into the arguments, they tried to be helpful, so I wanted to let you know that. Couple things before I hit the highlights of the manager's report, I'm not looking for a motion tonight, but just kind of a nodding of the heads, if you will. Every year I go to ICMA, which is International City County Management Association, and unfortunately, the conference is on October 28th, which conflicts with your council meeting. So I'm going to ask the council's permission to be excused from the next meeting, if that's okay? No? Okay. I'll just fly back on whatever day. But if it is okay, I mean, the statute says I'm supposed to attend the council meeting, so let's excuse, so. If he's willing, he, yeah, so if y'all were good with that, I will not be at the next meeting.
The meeting will at least be a lot shorter.
It will be. Guarantee it, okay. Also, just to let you know that we own some property near the Sagecroft Development, it had an old house on it. Long story short, we have finally gotten permission to totally own that house, and we're going to be tearing it down. The significance of that is that will give us some opportunity to do some park development at some point. Adam and I were in the house, it's just in bad shape, like we do everything, we had to do in asbestos, so they've got to get that out, and then our staff will do a great job taking it down and making it much better than it is right now. Couple things from the manager's report I would like to bring to your attention is I want to give a shout out to our folks that have been attending the Citizens Academy. We went, we had engineering last night, they went a little bit over, but they were attentive to the very end, and like you heard later, they will make new friends, and they will learn a lot about city government. We'll be doing it again, and that is Abby's ship to sail, as I tell her all the time. We'll be doing it again, and that is Abby's ship to sail, as I tell her all the time, and so, um, you're doing a good job on that, Abby, I couldn't be more proud. Just as we've done bank RFPs, we're getting ready to do audit RFPs, we do that about every three or four years, uh, that will come up in FY 26, so what that means is, the thing you need to take away from that is that there are fewer and fewer CPAs getting into this business. Uh, we've used Daniele for a number of years, last time we did it, I think she was the only one that submitted, and, um, Daniele is extremely professional and she doesn't cut any slack, believe me. If you've been over at Crooked Creek Park, I'm sure you've seen the pickleball court, it is going well, I was told that the dirt there is something we always are concerned about, whether they're going to have to do any undercutting, and, uh, they are not, which is good news for us, which may mean that it may be a little bit less than what we thought it is, and that is all the report I have, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Mike, um, we'll miss you next meeting, and, uh, I was kidding when I said that, I didn't mean to, trying to be funny.
You hurt my feelings, but I'll get over it.
I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's fine, I may tune in, who knows?
All right, thank you, Mike. That brings us to, uh, Councilman Member Comments.
Councilmember Ambergy.
Captain, God bless you, and, uh, Jesus loves you, and don't, don't ever change, buddy, um, God bless everyone, have a great night.
Councilmember Also Brooks.
All right, you know I'm long-winded, so put on your seatbelts. Felix, uh, with NCDOT will be on Facebook Live, October 30th at 11:30, so make sure y'all tune into that. Couple meetings ago, I reached out to the community and said that there's a lot of negative things going on, so if you send me some stuff about your organization, I'll be happy to tell people what's good going on in Indian Trail. First thing I got is from Rotary, Union West Rotary received, donate, recently donated $2,000 to the Honor Flight, the Honor Flight was able to take 100 plus veterans on a chartered flight to Washington DC on Saturday, September 27th, where they were able to tour Washington Mall and monuments. Union West Rotary also, was also awarded a $6,000 grant for their annual stocking project, the club aims to pack 2,500 stockings for service members to be distributed on base near holidays. Second one I got was from, um, Crisis Ministry Assistance, it's a few stories, one was, uh, this lady, she works two jobs to keep a roof over her head, when a sudden setback put her second job on hold, this hardworking single mom found herself behind on a $2,160 rent, she sold her jewelry, leaned on her family, and never stopped fighting to make ends meet. Last week she got her security job back, put her paycheck, her first paycheck, uh, but her first paycheck won't come until the end of the month, thanks to your support, Crisis Assistance was able to step up with a $600 to help bridge the gap while her family helped with the rest, she's back on track, working two jobs again, determined to stay, um, at, in her home. There's a few other ones, but I'll just read them at another time, and this last one, uh, Wesley Kazaa from, uh, Ground 40, Ground 40 is a 501(c) nonprofit dedicated to helping men overcome prisonment or recovery and addictions by providing them with a safe environment until one of our seven properties for at least six months, complete, uh, free, uh, charged during their stay, we care for these men and extend support to their families, addressing their basic needs in family, clothing and other resources while the men work towards rebuilding their lives. Uh, for the sake of time, I won't read all of it, but if you, um, are interested in donating to any of these ministries, then feel free to reach out to them or give me a call and I'll tell you how you can reach out to them. Thank you, everybody, and thank y'all for staying through the whole meeting and seeing what goes on council meeting, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Uh, the carnival's in town, so it starts tomorrow evening, Wednesday through Friday, it's at Sun Valley Commons down there, uh, at the movie theater, so it's, uh, I've got, they'll be open Wednesday through Friday evenings, and they're opening Saturday and Sunday, so if you're looking to Carmel Apple, that'd probably be the place to get it. Uh, the Union County Sheriff's Office Trunk or Treat is at the main office, and that's October 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so if you're looking a safe place to take your kids, that's probably it, so, uh, but, uh, my wife and I handed out candy there a couple of years ago, the first year they had it, and it's a good crowd, and, uh, I think the Sheriff's Office supplies all the candy, just to be on the safe side, so if you're looking at a safe place and a great event, that's it. Freedom Community Church Men's Breakfast is this Saturday at 8:00 AM, if you want to go, uh, good fellowship, good food. The Sun Valley Fall Festival at Sun Valley Columns is this Saturday at 10:00 AM, uh, that's over near Stiegl's Produce Market, they got vendors, food, um, face painting, bounce houses, so it's, I think this is the fifth year they've had it, so it's, it's a pretty goo, it's a very good family event. And last is this Saturday, the 18th, from 11:00 to 5:00, Hudson Grove AME Zion Church is having a pig picking, barbecue dinner fundraiser, and it's my understanding it's here at Town Hall, right, is that right Hayden?
Uh, there's a rental in the building, yes, sir.
Did he say?
Rental in the building.
It's going to be here?
I think so, yes.
That's the address they gave was Town Hall, so I don't, I, I assume, uh, anyway, sounds good, it's $20 a plate if you, you know, I grew up with pig pickings in North Carolinas, and so, uh, so anyway, I'm pretty sure it's here, but you might want to check that, but that was the address they had on the, uh, thing they put out, so, other than that, God bless you, thanks to Sheriff's Department for everything you do, and have a great evening.
Councilmember Gay.
Like to thank everybody for coming, one of the things I'd like to mention is we have done things, um, you know, because of controversies and try to make things a little more fair, we, uh, at one point, Park and Recs had the option to give free rental to, uh, nonprofits, and, uh, and so we, we had conflicts and people had strong feelings about different groups, and so we decided to, uh, to do away with that, and so now everybody that rents space in the park or in the Town Hall pays, and, uh, that's the way that it should be. Uh, we also had people coming in, uh, nonprofits that, um, always were asking for donations and, you know, strongly believed that the people in the town here should make donations themselves to the charities that they support, and I had checked with, uh, Jim Wodowich when he was here, and I'm sure Alicia would probably, um, con- confirm that we don't have the ability, uh, of the manpower to look at these, um, nonprofits and see what percentages, well, first of all, if they are a nonprofit, do their research, and then what percentage they actually put toward the cause, and, uh, and so it's, uh, it's fair to the citizens, in, in my opinion, that, um, if we don't have the ability to do that, that they make their choices, so we, uh, we continually try to, um, put things more in perspective with, um, what's best for the, the town and for the people of the town, so, and we do, uh, appreciate the last meeting, we did have, um, our folks acknowledge that we can build on our, uh, acreage that we bought, and, uh, it's not, uh, it's not a swamp, and, um, so there's good thing, good things going to come with that piece of property, and it was a, an excellent investment for the future of the town, so, everybody be careful going home, and, uh, again, thanks, I hope you'll come next time.
Mayor Cohn.
Okay, um, and, and I just remembered this, and Abby, Mike can help me, or, or Mike, uh, town was just nominated for, for a, by the chamber, were, were we not, for?
Yes, we are a finalist for an Employer of Choice Business and Excellence, Excellence in Business Award for the Chamber this year.
And I'm real proud of that, uh, real proud of our staff, and, uh, Abby, you're part of the chamber too, uh?
Yes.
So I know that, uh, them liking you helps too, so, but, uh, appreciate everything that, that our staff does, and we do have a good staff, I think that's a reflection of you too, Mike, so, uh, good job. Just, too, I'd like to say, Mike, Hayden, Clarence, Andy, and Jake, who's not here, uh, thank you for, uh, all you did Saturday, um, it, it, there was stress on all of us, and, um, appreciate, appreciate you working it, appreciate what you did, and, um, uh, it doesn't go unnoticed for any of you, so thank you. Uh, remind you about hits after six tomorrow, uh, not tomorrow, Thursday, and, uh, two quick things too, Sun Valley High School, are they undefeated, or have they lost one game, does anybody know?
I believe they're five and one.
Five and one, Clarence would know, we played there, they beat Charlotte Catholic, what was it, last week? Which was a big win for them, Sun Valley's got a good football team this year, I think Porter Ridge is four and two, they got a good football game, uh, good football team this year, uh, I think they beat Marvin Ridge last week, so, uh, get out to a high school football game, get out and enjoy, uh, our town, and, uh, it's a lot of fun, I try to do that as frequently as possible, and lastly, I got a really quick story, I was out the other day, I like to walk, I went to Crooked Creek Park, and, uh, this was one, one day, and it started to rain, and we are building pickleball courts out there, six pickleball, no, excuse me, eight pickleball courts out there, I know better, eight pickleball courts, so they've got the parking lot kind of blocked off, and they've also got the Frisbee Golf Trails blocked with yellow tape, but when it started to rain, I thought what a good idea it would be for me to go down the trails, to get in the trees to keep the rain from hitting me, so I went under the yellow tape and I start walking, and the first thing I thought of is, well, the leaves are all covered up on these, uh, trails, I said, you know, I better look out where I step, and soon as I said that, a snake is at least as long as me, at least, excuse me, about six foot long slithered right in front of me, so I quickly decided that it probably wasn't the best thing to do is to walk down that trail, because I am afraid of snakes, even if it was a black snake, wouldn't have mattered to me, but, uh, so if you're not supposed to go there, don't go there, that was my lesson learned, uh, don't do that. With that being said, thank you all for coming tonight, uh, I thought we had a very good meeting, I appreciate council, uh, for everything that, all your comments, and, uh, may God bless, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.